Okay, seven o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Karen, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gerard?
Here.
Councilmember Husnek?
Here.
Councilmember Monson?
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Here.
Mayor Bain?
Here. Ask all those that are able to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember, before you... We have tonight's agenda. Quick note that we have reordered a couple of items in our regular agenda just to accommodate schedules of those who are present, those who are presenting in person. Everything else on the agenda is as was previously presented. There's no new items, just the reordering of the regular agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is our open forum. Open forum is your time to talk to council, anything that is on your mind. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. We welcome your comments. And Tim? If you could, please state your name and address for the record.
Tim, I have a general delivery at the Forest Lake Post Office.
Very good. Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to see all of you, all of you well, seeing that I have phone calls allegedly waiting from you, Mayor. I believe many of you others have phone calls to make to me. Unfortunately, I have to come to you to look to resolve a situation now that has been wasting taxpayer dollars for now three years for a neighbor dispute and a lack of workmanship on the city's end, both by Dan and also Donovan. I have put in 16 complaints to the tune of nothing but a result of everybody was in compliance. Now, Mayor Bain herself, last year I do believe it was, described what I described in my backyard to be similar to her very neighbor. Now, I am not a problem. I have dealt with the death of my grandfather, my grandmother, my mother, and my dog in the past three years. In the meantime, I have been molested by city officials in the police department coming on to assisting an inspection from police. When I asked for the police chief, I was denied that God-given right, right there from the police officer. I think that if we're going to have a situation like that, I'm, I as an individual have a common situation. So, I see that there are violations of my Fourth Amendment, which anybody that's taken an oath should back their own oath and step up to the plate and honor their oath. We also have violations to the Title 18 of the U.S. Code, denying my right to commerce, okay? All sorts of things have gone wrong, and I would propose that we do something correct, as opposed to not returning phone calls. I believe that there's one or two of us that are guilty of these things. We're all guilty, we're all human, but when there's a problem, fix the problem as the city, okay? And don't pit neighbor against neighbor because of an anonymous complaint, and then don't follow through on the backside when there's other complaints for the same and/or similar, not to mention there is a crack right down the center of your own drive, which is a violation of your own policy. So I would say if we're going to get the goose, the gander better be right there behind. And obviously, I see that there's some discontentment within the audience, and that's all fine and good, but I'm tired of my rights being walked over because your policy says something that impedes or goes directly against and therefore wars against the Constitution of the United States. I would say that some definite things that could be done is stop wasting taxpayer money to go after personal vendettas of neighbor to neighbor. Let the neighbors deal with it. If police need to get involved at that point in time, then so be it if there's violations of the actual law. But if we're going behind each other's back to stab each other in the back and not knowing my situation, my neighbors have totally caused me a living hell. So has this man, so is this man's lack of responsibility, so is this man's, so have you. I will conclude very shortly, because I understand time is up, the essence. I do not come just to present problems to the city. You guys know what you have done wrong. I offer solutions to not only the officers in question by not honoring their oath, which is to the Constitution and the people of this town.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up.
And, and, offer more training as to deal with the situations at hand, because I'm sure I'm not the first complainant that has put complaints in and not had a darn thing done about it, and my rights are violated because of your lack of action on my complaints of same and/or similar offenses that you are coming after, the landlord, not even in the right process. You wouldn't go after TCF, the building, you would go after them specifically. It's sickening, and I want something done.
Thank you for...
I would expect some phone calls back. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next up, Dick Cheetah.
I've been following your actions on the compost site. I'm a user of the compost site. I find it to be a facility that is a, used and, by the broad spectrum of the entire community. It's not special interest, it's not for the rich or the poor, it's for those of us who want to do it a particular way. And to complicate it a little bit, the cost that's associated with the new hauler, Republic, makes it fairly expensive for a lot of people to have two or three additional bins to haul away their leaves, et cetera. But that doesn't leave you any room in there for tree branches and some of the other things. This discussion went on when first the compost site was being used a number of years ago, and there was some information given at that time that the person who was to run the site, contract, let's put it that way, was questionable because of the background that they had in servicing other communities and the problems. The current board at that time didn't heed any of that information and went forward. And so, really what happened, we ended up with the mess and the problem and all the costs that were associated, and that, that's dollars that could be spent servicing the great majority of our community. And I think that that's the obligation that all city servants have, is to represent the community in the best way and not in their particular direction or specific way. So I'd like you to really consider this. I've been to the Hugo site, I have property in Hugo. I've been to the site in Ramsey County. When the county takes over, it becomes a little more difficult, and it's not as friendly, you know, when you go to this site. Your neighbor, or a friend, or someone that you may have met in the past is there to greet you and give you the directions, and it's been a very pleasurable experience using it. So I hope that you take these things in consideration when you make decisions that is basically gonna affect the entire community, not a specific group, but the entire community, because the benefit is to the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That closes tonight's open forum. Council, before you, we have a consent agenda, items 6A through 6I. I will either entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, providing we compose 6D or Sin Delta, just for further consideration.
Very good. 6D, any other changes? All right, you're a second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Madam Mayor, item 6D is in Delta, that was a meeting that I missed, and so I want to abstain from the approval of amendments to that meeting.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve item 6D?
So moved.
A second.
Motion and a second. Now those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
One abstained.
Very good. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our regular agenda this evening, first item for discussion is a temporary compost site. Dave Adams. Although, do I have an old version in front of me? We were going to...
Item E.
We were going to swap these. Is there any objection on council if we swap items 7A and 7E and take the Rice Creek Watershed District item first? Bridget, do we need a formal action to amend the agenda? I should have caught that.
Technically, yes, if you could just make a motion to amend the order that the...
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, swapping item 7A with item 7E.
Second.
Motion and a second. Now those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And we have an amended agenda. My apologies. New item 7A is the Rice Creek Watershed District. Dave, this is also yours.
I appreciate you rearranging the schedule, so I have two attendees here can get on their way for the evening, so we have a booked agenda. So, this topic, we've talked about multiple times in the last few months. As we all know, development is starting to create its, work its way down south of Headwaters Parkway, and city staff in Rice Creek Watershed have really started discussions and had a, you know, a great deal of want to try to come up with some kind of a regional plan for stormwater management. And working together, we kind of came up, you know, with city staff, Boltman Bank and Rice Creek Watershed, came up with a plan and a study that we'd like to do down in that area. So, tonight, I have Tim Olson, Water Source Resource Project Manager from Boltman Bank, and Nick Tomczek from Rice Creek Watershed District. He is a district administrator, and congratulations to him, he just removed the interim off of his name and is the unanimously selected district administrator. With that, I'll hand it over to Tim to kind of give us a brief presentation of the study.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and staff. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to discuss the JD4 stormwater planning study. Let's dive right into it. So just to give everybody some context, we're in the southwest corner of the city. It's, from a drainage perspective, it's largely served by judicial ditches. JD4 in the green area is where the, is the focus of this particular study, and you can see the JD7, JD2, JD5 watersheds there in orange as well. So, we're in, this is a pretty active development area in the city right now, and so that sort of necessitated the need for a stormwater planning study. Give you a little background, Rice Creek and the City of Forest Lake have shared a need for planning in the JD4 watershed for some time. You know, regional planning is lacking in this area, and there appears to be some excessive infrastructure in other locations and other development areas. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Coordination on this particular project began back in early 2018. The previous administrator, Mr. Belfiore, their watershed engineer, Houston Engineering and myself, presented to the city council back in early 2018, and now we've sort of fast-forwarded to August of 2019, and we, Boltman Bank's on behalf of the city submitted a proposal to Rice Creek Watershed to develop the study. There's active development in the Headwaters area, as David mentioned, and really the current efforts as they stand now are really in the form of hydraulic modeling. So the Rice Creek Watershed District has done some regional modeling of the area, understanding sort of the big system as a whole, and the city has done some more refined modeling in the development areas. So, that's a really good foundation and a base for what's to come. I like to use aerial photos. I think this really, really tells the story of how development has occurred. The first handful are black and white, because they're from the '30s, but it's really interesting to see the highway systems and how they served the area. You can just barely see Clear Lake at the top of the photo, there's that dark sort of moon shape. And as we click through these, you can see how development starts to occur. So in 1957, roadways are a little bit more pronounced, you can start to see the shadow of the airport show up a little bit more, some homes being built around the lake. Fast-forward all the way to 1990, we see the interstate has been built, commercial development happening there. Still not much active development south of the lake, but when we fast-forward into 2002, then we can start to see these footprints of the development areas coming into play. There's some townhomes in this area, single-family residential. 2006, we see the Headwaters Parkway construction starting to happen, development in the Headwaters area is starting to occur. Even in 2008, which really wasn't that long ago, we can start to see some more active development there, residential and commercial, in the Headwaters Parkway area. In 2015, even more. I'm flipping through these pretty quick on purpose, but, and then finally, when we get to present day, we can see that there's current active development in the Headwaters area right now, near Lila School, Headwaters 9th, 10th, and then in the purple area or pink area, there's some future development there, south of the Parkway. The city owns some property in there. JD4, of course, weaves its way through, the city actually maintains a portion of that, of the judicial ditch, in the areas where development has occurred. Rice Creek Watershed District manages the remainder. I also turned on some ponds in this photo. In this photo alone, there are like 65 ponds that are drawn here, and I think that's a really good indication of how infrastructure has normally, traditionally occurred. I think that with some planning and some greenway corridor identification, we can bring users via pedestrian facilities and also some, maybe some wetland restoration in the area, to really have this be a feature in a development area and minimize the amount of infrastructure. This is the current land use. Now, the comp plan was recently approved, I believe, so we're gonna be looking at the future land use now. But you can see that there was a lot of area here identified as a, as a single-family residential. In the Headwaters area, some planned unit development PUD area, commercial sprinkled in. If we fast-forward to what the planned land use changes would look like, what I really want to focus on in this area are some of the mixed-use areas, so the red crosshatch, as well as the green locations. I'm not sure if you'll be able to see my cursor here or not, but in this green area, you can see there's some wetlands and some natural features that have been identified as park area. This is really great to see, because stormwater can be worked into all of those land use And there has been a need for a planning study. I spoke of some of those reasons already, but, you know, we really want to understand the city's responsibility for the public drainage system, so as development occurs over the top of this public drainage system, there should be a systematic approach for there to be a transfer of authority. So right now, there, it's mostly drain tile, very small pipe that's serving these, these land areas. Ultimately, the city is going to be responsible for those areas as the locations develop. So analyzing and refining the cities in the Rice Creek modeling will be very important too in this area, really identifying how much water is flowing from one side to the other, and making sure that future development doesn't impact flow rates downstream. There are flooding concerns at the top end of the Rice Creek Watershed, and so making sure that we're mitigating those flood flows. And also protecting water quality and volume will be really important moving forward. You know, having a plan for phase development and designing greenway corridors into these urban landscapes, I think will be very important for stormwater moving forward. So we, in the proposal that we presented to Rice Creek initially, and I believe that you guys have all seen that now, there is some scale to, there's some scale to the study. So really JD4, Branch 3, the main branch of JD4 and Branch 3, will have a really detailed, refined modeling approach, really moving from north to south through the Headwaters area. Branch 4 will have some more limited detail, and then JD2 at the end, just looking at major regional flows. So just understanding how development may occur through the, through the Headwaters area and south, you know, trying to really limit the amount of detail that we put into the areas that are maybe further from development. The project's scope includes some communication. Of course, meetings are great to discuss needs and make sure that everybody's on the same page, doing some topographic and boundary survey to supplement the information that's already available, understanding capacities of the system, of course, doing the modeling and water quality, and finishing with a report. Right now, the total is at 63,300. The agreement would be to split that cost between Rice Creek Watershed and the City of Forest Lake. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Tim?
Madam Mayor.
Absolutely.
With your modeling that you'll be doing, there's a lot of discussion nowadays that the old models are obsolete due to all this additional last 15, 20 years of rainfall. Will you incorporate to these new models, or is that not designed far enough along yet?
That's a fantastic question, and resiliency plays a role in these planning studies. And so right now, we have new rainfall information. You know, anytime we're using that new rainfall information, it's past data, you know, so we can always try and project into the future too, and I think that that's a, that's a major discussion point right now, and something that we'll definitely consider in this study, is how much more should we be planning for? How much bigger should the infrastructure need to be? You know, Rice, Forest Lake is at the top of the watershed, and anything that leaves the city's boundaries is impacting somebody else downstream. So, really making sure that those flow rates are mitigated in the city's limits before they're discharged out is very important, especially considering some of the flooding concerns that are happening in other parts of the watershed district. So, having some resiliency in planning for that is certainly something that would be worked into here. I think it sets a good precedent too for future planning for the city.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you have a graphic of JD2 and JD4? Of what, just the geographic area?
Yeah, so let's go.
It's just good to have the perspective. Oops.
Sorry. Let me see if I can get it back up. Yeah, so in the green in this image here, that's basically all of JD4. JD2, you can see in the, in the bottom right-hand corner, that kind of spans, I think that's Hardwood Creek. Is that true? Yeah, so that's, that's actually Hardwood Creek. So, Hardwood Creek kind of comes down from Hugo and then up and then, and back over. So there's, there's kind of a hump in there, and then JD7 and JD5 feed into JD2. So JD2 is kind of on the south border of the city.
Very good. Thank you. Further, any further questions? Just, it's great to see this regional approach. Let's not, in the next phase of development, have 65 individual ponds that need to be maintained by somebody, and we have a long list of those ponds in the city to consider for future infrastructure, so a more regional solution, I think, is a great idea, and I support the study tonight. Not hearing any additional questions, I will either entertain, sorry, we do not take public comment at this point. I will entertain a motion, or if council had any further questions, happy to entertain those as well.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the joint agreement with Rice Creek Watershed District for the regional planning study of JD4 and JD2 drainage areas.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome to the new role. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Moving along in terms of order of where we have invited speakers, we're next going to take the temporary compost site discussion. Dave is going to get us started, and we also have Commissioner Miron in the audience, as well as Mr. Travis. Dave will get started, and then we'll invite Washington County to say a few words as well.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just touch some quick bases, we kind of went over this at length at the last workshop, so we'll kind of breeze, breeze through some of this. A lot of it's the same, I have added a few extra slides just for clarification of questions that were asked. Just to kind of recap the recent events, the city used to operate a full-service compost site up at Dixie Park, the northwest area, kind of by the Northwater Tower up there. The city wanted to get out of the composting business, and that's kind of why they, they switched to Bubral, to open that private compost operation where the temporary is right now, actually was in the backside of where our compost site is right now. As it was spoken at open forum, they ran into quite a bit of environmental issues to the tune of almost a quarter million dollars, which cost the city for cleanup, which kind of makes you not want to go to the private contractors to run your own site with the experience that we had. In 2017, the fall of 2017, Washington County approached us to ask if they could take over our site and basically take over operations, handle the monitoring, the chipping of the wood, and hauling out the compost. There were some negotiations and some, that just fell through, couldn't come to agreement, city council and Washington County couldn't come to agreement over a, basically a land lease. Going forward, Washington County approached the City of Hugo, basically with the same type of desire to take over their site. They, they came to agreement, and the Northern Yardways site, it says opens, but they're about to open. I believe it's, hopefully by the end of this week, they should be open. So, just like all of us, you ran into a lot of rain and trying to, trying to build a site with nine inches of rain doesn't work that well. Just for comparison sakes, here's the, the hours on your left-hand side. Forest Lake is split into spring, summer, and fall hours. Spring and fall, we operate four days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Saturdays, and Sundays. And then the summertime, we drop down to just Wednesdays and Saturdays. On your right-hand side, the proposed Northern Yardways site, operated by Washington County, will be open four days a week, April through November, and additionally, every Saturday through the winter. Items that are accepted are pretty much identical between Forest Lake and the Northern Yardways site, except for, the Northern Yardways site will accept organics, and basically that's why they are gonna be open the year round, for residents to bring food waste and other, they will still accept leaves or branches and all that stuff, but for more of it, it's for those organics through the winter. Just quickly, again, here's a map of the current site, is on the top side of that picture, and the Washington County-operated site is off of 170th, about four miles away, about five minutes' drive down 61 and County 04. Once again, the challenges of the compost site, for internally just seasonal staff, they can only work so many days and so many months in a row, so right now, we're employing three separate staff members just to meet these requirements. The realized cost, $20,000 to $35,000 annually, that covers our seasonals, disposal costs, rentals, and fuel for our trucks to haul the compost. Right now, our brush is, is being chipped for free, but we're having a lot of trouble getting it chipped for free, so that probably will be an added cost going on if we want to keep that site clean. And then the unrealized costs, as discussed last week too, we average between 750 to 900 hours of public work staff time, just to haul the compost out, and usually in the spring and the fall is when, when we do it the most. And then just breaking down how many loads we've hauled out since opening, and just the miles we put on our, on our trucks. Just to put in perspective, the staffing concerns for public works maintenance, currently public works employs eight full-time employees in parks and streets. So, on a day like today, six of them were out hauling compost, they hauled compost all day long. And we have a minimum of one person out there sweeping streets, so they don't get covered in leaves. So, on that list below, that shows how many available public works employees we have on a typical week. This week is, that will have, we had one available today, we'll have one available tomorrow. If we get everything cleaned up tomorrow, we'll have seven available on Wednesday, backed down to one on Thursday, and then a full crew on Friday. So basically, like I said, there's two days where we have a full staff this time of the year. So beginning about mid-October through almost Thanksgiving, that's what our week looks like. That's if nobody calls in sick, and there is no things such as deer hunting, and nobody takes vacation. That's where we're at. So, and then just a list of all the things that, you know, we're trying to get accomplished in between hauling compost. And also just to note, sometimes we do use utility personnel if they're not, if we have a certain project we have to get done, but then they fall behind on their work as well. And just a quick example, this is up on our whiteboard. This is all the tree trimming that's just been called in the last couple of months and by residents, and they're all just told that once the compost site closes, we'll be able to get to it, because we don't have that staff. We have to blacktop because the blacktop plants close, and we have to get the mowing done because pretty soon the snow is going to cover it up. But the tree trimming, we can't do in the snow until the snow is too deep. But just a quick example of kind of stuff that gets backed up. Then just once again, just the advantages, freeing up some general fund dollars, taking back some of that working hours for Public Works, reducing equipment, our mileage on our equipment. You'll see an increase in operational days at the new Washington County site, the acceptance of organics, and just the possibility of increased revenues by leasing out the site. So if we are to leave that area. And then the disadvantages, you know, you don't have a Forest Lake-only site, and it would require an additional, you know, five miles or 10-mile round trip, depending where you're at. It may, depending where you're coming from, it may actually be closer, you know, to where you're going. It's just, from where we're at right now would be that difference. And then discussion items, kind of like we talked about last week, you know, is it worth having two sites within five miles of each other? You know, do residents want to pay for two compost sites? And then what is Washington County's opinion, and Commissioner Miron and Jeff Travis are here tonight to kind of give their two cents' worth as well, freeing up some general fund dollars, gaining back some hours of labor, then revenues, and, you know, what the next steps would be if we were to plan on closing. So I'd be willing to entertain questions, or if you'd like those guys a percentage.
Any immediate questions for Dave before we have Commissioner Miron?
I kind of ask my questions during the workshop period, so I...
Let's hold on questions and hear maybe all of the information at once. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmember, staff. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Mayor, you gave me a call the other day and indicated this would be on the agenda, and offered the opportunity to come and speak to you. Certainly yard waste is a critical issue for all of Washington County, and we have different type of service available across the county, a more expanded service that's been available in the southern part of the county and very little service here in the northern part of the county. As a commissioner, I get calls oftentimes every spring and again in the fall, as people are doing yard work for locations for yard waste, and more importantly, during significant storm events where there's a significant amount of tree damage and that type of thing that goes on. And Forest Lake is one of the few communities in Washington County who has a compost site and accepts tree waste. Most compost sites, as the one in Hugo, Marina on St. Croix, and some of the other smaller communities, take branches but not full tree waste. And so that has been problematic for many residents throughout Washington County. And so we spent considerable amount of time evaluating the need for a compost site within the northern part of the county. And we have a temporary site that's located where Dave had indicated. We have a three-year lease agreement on that site, and we have a contractor approved to operate that site when it's open. As Dave indicated, we're a little later than what we had hoped to be open with that site, but that's coming along. We're actually, the contractor that was hired to do the excavation work and the site preparation is a little behind schedule. He's actually, or they are actually within some deduct areas on their contract because they didn't complete it within the time specifications. With this site, we now have reciprocal agreements with Ramsey County that allows residents of Washington County to not only use this site, but the Ramsey County site as well. So once we have it in place, and actually the reciprocal agreements are in place already, but, you know, we now have something to offer residents of Ramsey County, as they have something to offer residents of Washington County. We expect this service area to be all the way from Mata Medei and that area coming to the north. So the site that we currently have is fairly well-located and off of a county road and a state highway for access. And the other option, as Dave indicated, is organics. And as we deal with state mandates with respect to recycling and recovery of waste, we have an opportunity to more closely meet the statutory guidelines and regulations that are coming our way with respect to recycling. So we believe this is a, should be a broad-based friendly service, and we hope that it serves the area well. I will mention one more thing, and then I would ask Jeff Travis from Washington County Public Health and Environment, who's been our lead on this project, to come forward and share more detail with it. There are no property tax dollars that are going to support this service. So from that standpoint, you know, taxpayers within Forest Lake, or Hugo, or any of the area of Washington County do not have to worry about tax dollars, property tax dollars supporting this service. Each of us has a garbage bill, and on that garbage bill is a county environmental charge, which has been reduced one time since my time on the county board. But there is adequate funding in our CEC, our county environmental charge, to cover the cost of this service. So residents of Washington County will not experience an increase in cost with this service coming on board, and we hope that it actually provides a broader service and allows all of the communities within the northern part of the county to maybe eliminate some costs from their budgets, as we provide a broader, more regional service to the area. So with that, and I can stand for questions now, or I can wait until Jeff Travis has a chance to address the council.
Let's have Jeff come up, address, and we'll do questions all at once. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff. Just to maybe go off of some of what Fran said, I've been involved in the evaluation side of this for two or three years, and then putting together the program that'll be hopefully launched shortly. It's with the contractor and the rain, it's been tough, but we should be open soon. And like David said, the menu of services is very, is pretty much the same with the addition of the organics and the food scraps. And we launched that program earlier this year in January at the Environmental Center in Woodbury. We've had a huge response from citizens, and we get notices, or requests, or comments from citizens in the north part of the county wanting, they just can't drive to Woodbury to drop off their scrap, food scraps, and we understand that. So we think that'll be a real additional benefit, because that's one of the real emerging areas, and the solid waste area is trying to figure out how to get those food scraps out. So this is our first effort to do this. Ramsey County's been doing it for a couple of years, and has had a lot of success. In Woodbury, at the Environmental Center, we've had, it's 50 or 60 people a day drop off food scraps, and so it's been real popular, and we've added that to our menu of services. In terms of the site itself, we've hired a contractor, and they're under a contract. We'll be collecting the material. It'll be similar to the site, the way Dave runs it now, where the leaves and the grass will be hauled out, and then the brush will be grounded as needed and hauled off. And then it goes to the district energy plant in St. Paul for energy recovery. In terms of the customer service and that, and maybe to speak to the gentleman's comments during open forum, I've been in charge of the Environmental Center operation for over 15 years, and one of our focuses is customer service. And we have a contractor there that handles all the technical parts of collecting and properly managing the hazardous materials, but we do specialize customer service training with them every year. We bring all their staff together for a day. We hire customer service specialists, because that point of interface with each citizen, everybody has that experience. And we can make that experience a good one, or we can be passive about it. And my choice as a manager is always meant to be active and try and really have that be the best experience. I mean, you're dropping off yard waste. We can say hello, we can say good day, you know, we can say thank you, and come again, and just simple things. And that friendliness that Fran talked about. So that'll be, it's going to be a real focus. We've communicated that to the contractor already. So I think that even if it's not the neighbor or the person that you used to know at the other site, you will get friendly service under my program.
Very good. Do we have questions? And I would say let's maybe open up broad questions, perhaps let's do Washington County questions first, and then kind of turn it back over to Dave on any Forest Lake-specific questions. Any questions specific for Commissioner Miron or Mr. Travis?
I have one. Go ahead. Do you see any disadvantages with both sites being open and available to Washington County residents, or the residents of Forest Lake?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Bystrom, it seems duplicative to have the two sites, and so, and then the expense of that. So from, as I've been in public service for nearly 30 years, and one of the guiding principles Washington County's always had is to try and be effective and efficient with that. So it doesn't seem necessary to have two sites. And, you know, maybe to give you assurance, you know, the message from the county board to our department and this program is to be there, and we're going to start at this interim site, but we have a property search going on with our Building Services Department, and it is our intention and plan to be in this space and offer this service ongoing. So it's not a risk area for the city to go without service, if that helps answer your question.
Yeah, that helps. And my question was, other than the obvious things that we've discussed, do you see any, you know, cons to having two of these sites? So I think you did answer that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I had a couple. One of the resident feedback items that I've heard over the last week as we've had this conversation in the community is, residents have a perception that our site is quite busy, and if you go by our site today, whoever is doing the wood chipping is a little behind, and there is quite an accumulation of inventory there. How have you planned for Forest Lake volume, and how are you ready for Forest Lake volume if we do close our site?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, that's a very good question. And so it was three years ago, we hired a consultant, Burns McDonald, which is an engineering and consulting company, and has some specialties in solid waste, and they helped guide us in how to look at this. And actually Ramsey County's had a robust yard waste program for a long time, and we were able to really use their data to extrapolate the expected participation and volume of material that would come to a northern site. And also including factoring in Met Council growth and looking to the future. You know, this is not a site for five years, it's a site for 25 years. And so, in fact, the site, the Hugo site, was too small to accommodate the expectations for a broader service to the northern communities. And so we leased land adjacent to that, we added four more acres to that, and that's really what the construction project has been, is to build that out so we have adequate space for the material, and also queuing space to get people off the street, the county roads, so it's not a safety risk, and that sort of thing. And then under the contract, the contractor will be on a will-call basis, so if we want the brush ground, we make a phone call. It's a service term in the contract, and so we should be able to handle the material. It's in and out, I think.
As a follow-up, if I may, do you have an ability, one of the, pause for a second. One of the things residents have liked is, Dave has done, and his staff have done a really nice job of being responsive after a significant storm event, and that has built an incredible amount of goodwill in our community, and they trust that if there is a storm tomorrow, the compost site's going to be open. Do you have that ability or that flexibility to extend hours or days if there were a significant storm event?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, absolutely. We, you know, we have that in the contract, that they would respond. Even if we want to change our regular hours, it's part of that term, is that they would step up and provide that service. For large events like that, we would be coordinating with the city public works and the county public works. If that site didn't have adequate space, we would be finding temporary locations to stage material, which happens already. We would just do that all together.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Please.
In Washington County, just on the north end, or how many sites are like between Ramsey County and Washington County, or is it just a one up north, and then you got to go all the way to Woodbury?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gerard, our first step into this area of direct service with yard waste is the northern site. The county board has also given us direction to fill in a gap. There's a gap across the center of the county in service opportunity for citizens. And our Building Services Division, they're doing the property search this year for the permanent yard waste site up in the north, which will succeed the interim Hugo site. And in addition, we're also looking for a location in the north part of the county for a second environmental center for the hazardous material collection. But the center of the site, the county there, does not have a location, and we'll be starting a property search for a central location in 2020. So it's just a year staggered from the effort here in the north. And then I think when you look at the north and the center, and then in the south, there are a couple of private operators that are still in business, and so we're working with them to, you know, try and find that balance point to fill in, but not get into their territory and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Very good. The rest of my questions are for Dave. Any other questions for Washington?
I just had a comment.
Absolutely.
I did get one negative comment by email that said, well, it's not five miles, it's 10 miles, you know, that kind of thing, because you got to do a round trip. To me, I see an opportunity to save some money here, and I think there's some other things we could do with that site, too, so. Just a comment, that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, too. I'm really, I'm really struggling with this one, simply because the feedback I've received has been, has been really mixed, and I feel like the process itself has been kind of rushed for us. I mean, we first heard about this just last week, you know, although we have heard from, you know, Public Works, what a, you know, what a challenge it can be to meet the needs of that, the space and the work that occurs there. I guess my thought about this, I mean, there are really obvious advantages to me, clearly obvious advantages to me, the greatest being the cost savings to the City of Forest Lake. I'm personally indifferent, as is my husband, who's the one that's doing all of the hauling all of the time. But I am a little bit concerned that we haven't done our due diligence in terms of our communication and the feedback that we really need to receive around this change, you know, within our community. And I guess my perspective is, I would love to see us kind of take a step back, finish out the season. I think we can go ahead and promote the new Washington County site these last couple of weeks, and then just take a little time, you know, to kind of further discuss this, gather some additional feedback potentially from our community. You know, Facebook can be kind of a microcosm of our community, but not always. You know, we have some older adults in this community who this, you know, this may, you know, provide some... know, provide some, you know, may be much more difficult for them. So I just am feeling like that would be a good way to move forward with this. Again, the pros, I think, clearly outweigh the cons at this point in time, from my perspective. I just want to be sure that it's the right thing for our community as a whole.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
I guess I'll make some comments as well. I agree with both of the perspectives that have already been shared, and also look forward to the opportunity to, in the long term, kind of make this partnership work and reduce the duplication of effort, especially in such a condensed geographic area. If you're going to have residents from, you know, much further south in the state, you mentioned Mata Medida to Hugo is a much further drive than where our current site is to Hugo. And so although we say Hugo, it's, given where our site is, it's just a short little distance. But I do think we do need to communicate the benefits and why we're doing this. I appreciate that Washington County has been a great partner in this and has approached us, and I think it's important that residents know that the preferred site originally was Forest Lake. And we turned down that opportunity to partner two years ago, and you found an alternative site. Also recognizing that all of these sites are operating under a temporary arrangement right now, I think there's some need to have a more permanent solution that's long-term. I understand that the permitting for that is incredibly expensive, and the infrastructure for that is more expensive. But I do think for us to continue to work together, find that permanent solution, and in being a partner to working together, if that means that we are closing our site, having that collaboration consolidation, you get a sense of what the volume is. So for me, it's more of a question of timing. So it's a great opportunity. The pros outweigh the cons. It's now a question of timing and whether we make that decision here tonight to close as of the end of the season, or whether we were to come back perhaps in early spring to evaluate. That does give your site some time to be open. It gives our residents, I expect, will be using that site throughout the winter. We do have some residents making the drive already to Woodbury, and I hear great feedback about the quality of the services at that site. I'm expecting you're going to hit the same mark in Hugo. So I am open to council's feedback on whether you wanted to make this decision tonight, if you wanted to table until earlier in spring and reevaluate once the site has been open. I do think it's a move in the positive direction, it's just a matter of when.
Madam Mayor?
It seems to me it's going to be some sort of a permitting issue keeping us going on at the site we've got going now. That's going to be an issue, isn't it? I mean, Dave isn't it, aren't we on a kind of a temporary permitting situation there?
Yeah, what is that timeline? Help us understand that.
I don't know if there's a specific end timeline, but that's what restricts us to how much we can have on site at a time. I think we're restricted to, we can only have 10 yards on of, that's why we have to haul stuff out so quickly, because we can't keep compost down there. We can't keep the trees. We have somewhat of a, you know, well, as you can see, we have some kind of, you know, forgiveness on that. But, you know, a lot of it's just, if you have a permanent, you can roll compost, you can make actual product, you can, you know, do wood chips and all that stuff. But for us, it's just haul it in, haul it back out. Nothing stays there.
So, Dave, your preference would be that the site would continue to operate until the end of November, and then we would close at the end of November directing at that point over to the Washington County site?
Yeah, I believe if you're going to close it, you should close it at the end of the year instead of reopening in the spring. And then you're confusing people that you were open the last time I came here, and now you're closed. I mean, they have some good communication that was attached onto this. I mean, I believe we can, with our staff there, and come up with something that, you know, it's four and a half weeks we're still open yet. We're open until the 27th of November. So four and a half weeks is a long time, and we'll get a lot of residents through in those next, over a month. So if you were going, if we are to close it, I would, I would hope we would decide to close it tonight and then go on the offensive of getting that word out and, you know, give us a month, month and a week to get that word out.
Any other questions or comments?
I, this one is difficult, as many of our decisions are. And last week during workshop, I was like, yes, this doesn't make sense that we have two of these cost savings for this city. But we took a week to think about it and to hear residents' feedback. And honestly, I haven't, most of the feedback that I've heard has been to wait and to, this is too fast. And so it really made me, you know, stop and think about what the residents want. There's already, you know, messages out there that it's closed. My husband got a call about the compost site today. Apparently he's on city council, saying that they're hearing already that the site is closed from, the Forest Lake site is closed from some of the people that are working there. I'm not sure how that happened, but I don't know, I'm kind of taking a long way of saying that I feel like I don't want to rush into something when we have a temporary solution right now. I guess my question really is, and you probably have already said this, so I apologize, but it's a three-year lease in a temporary space. Your people are looking for property now in the northern region of Washington County. We're telling people that it's, you know, four miles, five miles, 10 miles round trip. What happens in three years if it's longer than that? I mean, I guess that's just like, I feel like we're making a promise that really is only for three years.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Munson, we have a three-year lease on the property, and we are currently doing a search. And I want to share with you that our Washington County staff has just said what an excellent group of people they're working with here in Forest Lake. Your staff has just been doing such a fabulous job in working with our staff to identify possible sites and working with us on that. So I compliment you on the people you have working for you and the job that they're doing. We do have this within our five-year capital improvement plan, which is out for public comment now. Our intentions are to continue to provide, we would never have gone this far, hiring a consultant without intentions of providing this service, you know, if it's proven feasible. And it has proven that way. It's a needed service. And as I said, I think it's a service that the taxpayers will appreciate in that they're already paying for this service in their county environmental charge. So we're not adding additional costs to property taxes by providing this service. It's a broader, more efficient service that we've recognized for some time. Jeff indicated he's been working on this for three years. It's a service that we've recognized for, even before that, as a needed service within this area. So our intent is to continue to provide this service, to work with private contractors, to provide a quality, friendly service to the northern area of Washington County. And we expect that this service will continue, and as Jeff indicated, we're actually looking for an area, you know, somewhere in the Lake Elmo, Stillwater area to provide additional service to county residents.
On top of the northern.
On top of the northern. Yes, absolutely.
I'll piggyback on those comments and also just mentioning to remind council that our existing location in Forest Lake is a temporary site, and that site has been, you know, earmarked to be a future public work site or other activity. So we, you know, whether we are considering a Hugo site, there is likely, especially given the trajectory of this project, there is likely a future site move in our future. And if things weren't to work out with the Washington County site, it's not my expectation, but, you know, we do have the opportunity to re-permit and have a Forest Lake-only site as well. It's, because again, that move is likely to happen.
Just one more comment. I just want to acknowledge that I see the pros in all of this. It's not an added cost. I think, I think sometimes in this community, change is hard. And so just, you know, presenting a possible change, people get really nervous about that. And so it's kind of, it's hard to balance because it also could be a savings for residents. And so, yeah, we're kind of at it. It's just a hard, a hard one.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Munson, we fully respect the decision that the city council has to make here. I've sat in that chair before in your capacity and understand, you know, the attempts and the real work that you do in trying to meet citizen expectations. So we understand that. You know, we also understand that our site is not open yet. And you have about a month left, as Dave indicated, a little more of a month of your scheduled service there. And, you know, you certainly have an opportunity to evaluate, your citizens have an opportunity to evaluate the service that Washington County will provide from the time your site closes until you would ultimately open in the spring. Although I know that, you know, your staff would like to know what their workload is going to be as you work on budgets and planning for 2020. But we certainly respect whatever decision you make here tonight. But we want the residents of Washington County to know, and particularly of Forest Lake, to know that the county is coming forward to provide a quality service here.
Very good. Davis, there a, is there a timeframe? So, you know, we're committed through the end of the season, which is going to be the end of November. Is there a timeframe in this gap off-season where we could table the decision, continue to get the word out there? Whether we keep our site open or whether we close our site, I do think we should continue the public, the public relations effort of extended, you know, extended items, as well as it is a Forest Lake resident benefit if we have ours or a separate service. So continue the service, continue to promote the new Washington County site, and then see how the feedback is. I expect it would be a place that many residents would visit over the holidays. You know, there's extra trash and extra items, Christmas tree disposal and things that would get taken care of. And then is there a timeframe in early 2020 or 2020 where we could make a decision that still gives you adequate time to plan? And that was a long-winded question, but I think you know where I'm going.
Yeah, no, I think earlier in the year would be fine. I know I'd need to submit my totals in January, and I have to check where our permit status is when that renewal is. But end of the holiday season into January, if we can have a better grasp. I think if you have residents that are loyal, that rather come to the site, I think just, you know, as I showed you those different times, you know, Washington County, that site will open a little earlier some days, be open on Fridays, be open earlier on that Saturday. You know, and they are going to put a sign up at our site, just, you know, to, whether we open or close, just to promote that site. And I think you might get some people just to go down there and check it out on those different times. And, you know, possibly by the end of one week close for the year, you might have a lot better grasp. You know, at the end of November, you might have a lot of compliments, a lot of, yeah, this is not a big deal, it's fine, or no, we, you know, we need to have two of them. So it may not take till January. It may, maybe just through, you know, the closing of this year, where you'll have a pretty good grasp on what people think.
I personally really like that plan. It just feels better. It feels better from a decision-making perspective, and I really feel like we have an opportunity to truly gauge, you know, kind of the pulse of our citizens. One more question for you gentlemen. Is there a way to gauge utilization of Forest Lake residents?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Bystrom, I used to say Commissioner, not Councilmember. Yeah, we'll be doing some, we're not going to do the driver's license scanning like at the Environmental Center, but we will be monitoring that and doing some sampling to get a gauge on how many people are coming from which parts of the community. And that, so we'll have either the contractor or some staff from our department there to, because it's important for us to understand where people are coming from and the usage patterns as well.
I think that would be very helpful in decision-making as well. We know that, you know, a significant portion of our residents that need to utilize this service are utilizing it in this downtime period. So, thank you.
Sure.
I also just want to make the point that it's something that we as council need to take responsibility for, because it has had impact on some residents, is we do have a number of residents that used to utilize the yard waste service of our previous trash provider. That cost has gone up substantially, and that was part of the, something we talked about as part of that contract negotiation. And because of that, there are a number of residents who are doing self-haul for the first time, and so that has probably also contributed to volume. And that just happened. And so we've got residents that are already in transition, and giving this a little extra space may just make sense to, A, let your service get open, have residents experience that service, and then make a decision of what's best for Forest Lake. Go ahead.
You know, I have no problem with if we leave it for a while. I'm fine, to be honest, closing it and saving the money and redeploying the public work staff. But if we're going to look at more data besides, nothing against Facebook, but public opinion, can we gather some data at our own compost site to say we get 200 different vehicles in a day, or we've got 300 different residents, or 2,000 different residents? It's really hard to gauge, do I have the same 10 people coming, or do I have 200 different people coming? I've kept my cans, so I don't go down to the compost. It's been fine in the years past when I did. So I really have this ignorance of how many different people are using it and how often. So if there's anything we could do in that arena, that would be nice data for me to have.
Davis, is there anything you can do in the next four weeks around collecting that type of information?
It'll be difficult. Just, you know, this weekend, we had nearly 300 people, separate vehicles come through on Saturday, and close a little over 200 on Sunday. So, and they're stacked out to 61. So to be able to keep track of who's coming in and then try to remember if that person was just here before, or, I mean, I think that's quite difficult. I mean, I know summertime, it's pretty much all repeat. You know, I think that cluster in the summer are the same people that come. Everyone's there, they come every Saturday. And I would say, except for the people that are bringing three or four loads that day, of that 300, that's pretty much all 300 separate people. You know, you probably have 50 of them that are, came, you know, two, three times. But, you know, your fall is when you see people that you've never seen, you know, all year long. So I just, without having more people there to be able to track that, I just think it would be, you know, very difficult to try to separate that out. I agree, it would be nice to be able to do that, but it just, with what we have for staff, it just would be a challenge.
I think you just brought up a good point, too, Davis, the safety issues there, parking on Highway 61. That's a terrible situation, getting in and out of that place.
Without a turn lane.
Without turn lanes. And you've got people stacked up on the highway there, it's not a good, not a good thing. And I think we, when we're thinking about this, we need to have that consideration, so.
Good point.
Okay. I'm happy to consider further discussion or a motion. There's a number of different directions we could take this this evening. If someone wants to make a first stab at a motion, happy to entertain. I'd like to thank Commissioner Mira and Mr. Travis for being here this evening. Thoughts?
Well, it kind of seems like everyone wants to hold off for a while to, at least until the end of the year, to make a decision, is what I'm getting.
Yeah, that's the consensus that I seem to gather as well.
Well, if that's the case, then I'd make a motion that we table it until the middle of December or the end of December.
How about if, can I amend that to table to end of January? Get through the holidays, get through that cycle.
Fine, yeah, I'll accept that. You did say take a stab at it.
Take a stab at it. So we have a motion to table until the end, until end of January. Any?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second? Any discussion?
No discussion on the table.
I, just one other thought that I have. Oh, no discussion on a table. You're, I'm sorry, yes.
Once it's been motioned and seconded, there's no discussion on the table.
Point of, yes, point of order, point of order made. Well done. All those in favor of tabling until the end of January 2020? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you so much, everybody.
I've run a few meetings.
Actually, the violator of that.
They tried it.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, quarterly financial report. Sandy.
Yes, good afternoon. The council has before them the quarterly report, on the second quarter report as of June 30th. And what you probably have noticed with the report, it's a little bit different than what it has been in the past. And, you know, taking a look at it, I brought a proposal to Mr. Casey on, you know, potential changes in the way we are presenting this report to the council to consolidate it a little bit better, get rid of some of the redundancy of the information, so that, but yet not, you know, give you the right information you need to make decisions based on this information. So, this did take a while to do, of course. And as you noticed, you know, the report probably was a little bit later than what it has been in the past. And now that we got this template set up, and what we're anticipating is after the quarter is ending, two months after that quarter end, we will be presenting the quarterly reports ongoing. We, of course, need time to do the cash reconciliation, which is usually done the month after, and then at that next following month, and we can provide the quarterly report for the council for review. So, with that, I did provide the council with an analysis that explains the differences that we noticed in the report. And I did not see anything alarming. And this report also is done a little bit differently than what it is done in the past. I use a trend analysis, basically comparing it to the prior year at the particular time. So, this June compared to June for the prior year. And that creates more trend analysis of the comparison between the two, because what we noticed with a lot of the expenditures in cities is a lot of that trend data is the same as the prior years. So, it more readily for us is able to find where those differences are. And with that, I provided analysis showing you where those differences are, and I did not see anything alarming whatsoever. There was some, you know, differences in revenues where we found that they're going to be received later in this year compared in the prior year, or expenditures that may have been spent earlier in this year than the prior year. But that certainly is something that is to be expected, particularly in repair and maintenance, you know, there's things that are going to happen. And, you know, knowing the budget managers, they're very budget-conscious, and I know that they take a look at that on a regular basis. You know, things like the surface water, they've taken a look at that. I mean, there was a new employee that was hired later than anticipated. So, it's those type of things that we were able to identify using this analysis. I also provide a analysis of the cash and investments, as was done in the past, but consolidated a little bit differently, where I just put it all on one page. And I also did a comparison, not only from one year to the next, with the types of investment types, but also from one quarter to the next, based on the time period of the maturities. So, that was a little bit different than what was done in the past. And all of these analyses, of course, provide some pictures, too, as far as, you know, graphical comparisons, so that you can identify that as well, a little bit differently. So, with that, if there's any questions, certainly I can answer any questions beyond what I have also provided for the analysis.
Thank you, Sandy. Open it up for questions from council.
Madam Mayor.
I just want to thank you for the legible, concise report at the beginning, so I didn't have to drudge through every last number to figure out where I was going to need to be. So, it was really nice to have kind of an executive summary, so I appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was very helpful.
Mr. Casey, nice hire.
I agree. I appreciate the new format. I also appreciate the comparison to this time last year. I think that timing difference is important. I did want to just maybe, if I could, make a couple of points in the, for those that are watching at home or watching along in the audience. Couple comments that is picked up in the analysis, but it always stands out to me and I want to comment on it. We don't get our second half of our property tax revenue until November and December. And so, if you're looking at a percent of budget for total revenue, that is why we are sitting at only 25% of revenue, even though as of June 30th, we're at the end of the year. And then also just wanted to point out that, as Sandy had mentioned, there were some timing differences on payments. And I think the assessment payment came in early, and so we're not expecting that to be 100% over budget. We're expecting that line item to be fairly complete for the year.
Can we share any more?
Couple things I wanted to point out. Anything, any other questions that council members have? Feedback on format? This is the first draft of a new format, and so certainly open to any feedback on format as well.
No, I appreciate the format as well, and in particular, the trending, because we know these budgets can have been flow for the very reason you've just cited, and others. And so, it's just really helpful to kind of overlay, you know, the years to say, is anything glaringly off? And it's very helpful. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the second quarter financials. I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Nice work. Next item on our agenda this evening, DNR grant agreement for fire hose. Chief Newman.
Up for discussion is a grant that we received from the DNR. It is to purchase fire hose. This is something that was in the budget for this year, and it's in the budget for next year. This grant was offered here earlier this year. We applied for it. Not all departments that apply for the grant get it, so that's good. Just looking for it to be approved.
Any questions for Chief? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
And tell us again, how much was the grant?
For $3,283.
I just want everybody to know, and, you know, because it's right here on our packet, but.
I move approval of the 2020 volunteer fire assistance grant.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item is also Chief Newman, fire truck purchase contract. Do you want to walk us through this?
Okay. This is to replace a 1985 tender. Back two years during our regular routine maintenance, they realized that the, or identified that the frame on the vehicle was cracked due to rust jacking. It's common for older trucks in Minnesota that deal with salt to have expansion in the frame, and it actually cracks the frame. So, we immediately took the truck out of service. We had several estimates to find out if it was something that made sense economically to repair versus replace. And of the four bids that we received, one wouldn't even work on it, and the remainder were very expensive to fix. They recommend, all of them had a recommendation not to fix it, but if you pay enough money, they will go ahead and fix it. So, being that the truck was built 1985, NFPA recommends a replacement of 20 years, and the city has a replacement policy for those vehicles that's 20 years as well. So, it was a great truck for us, worked for us. It exceeded our replacement timeframe that we have. However, repair and maintenance on it was fairly cheap, and it worked well. But we're to the point now that we have to replace that vehicle. And so, what we're looking at is a tender from Rosenbauer, and it's through the HGAC Buy Consortium, so it meets all of the requirements for bidding. Price of the truck is $402,476. A percentage of that is paid through from Columbus. So, the cost for the city of Forest Lake will be $319,807, and that has been in the CIP for a couple of years for payment in 2020. So, what I have in front of you is a resolution in order to move forward with that truck purchase.
Any questions for Chief?
I know we've been talking about this for a year or more.
This one's been on radar for a while. Yes, it has.
Looking at that old truck, there's just no way that we can repair it. Just no way. This is not part of the deal. And so, I think, you know, we're staying within budget and...
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of Resolution 10281902, a resolution authorizing purchase of chassis, pumper, truck tanker body, and related items through the HGAC buy program in the amount of $402,476.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening, make sure I am not missing anything. Approved plans and specifications and authorized bid for water treatment plant one and three rehab. Ryan, this is you.
Mayor City Council, for your consideration tonight is the approval of plans and specifications for water treatment plant one and three, and authorize ad for bid. The project was given authorization to prepare plans and specifications back in January, and we've completed that, and working with Public Works on that work. So, with the anticipated schedule, we would hold the bid opening November 21st and could possibly have award on the 25th. Project will take approximately about a year. The work, including the filter rehabs, will be done, obviously, in the low-flow season, so winter, early spring, before we hit our water peaks during irrigation. And then, some of the other final product will be, continue to be ongoing through the spring and summer. So, with that, unless there's any other additional questions, it's our request that the city council approve plans and specs and authorize ad for bid for water treatment plants one and three.
Any questions for Ryan?
Nothing for me this, it's been on the radar as well, so.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that the council approve the plan specification and authorization for bids on this project for water treatment plant one and three, the rehab.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. That is the end of our regular agenda this evening. We do have an item, two items that we will be going into closed session for. However, we will reorder that closed session to be at the end of the meeting. So, we will go into staff and council updates now before we go into closed session. Chief Newman, anything for you, anything from you this evening?
I have nothing, unless you have something for me.
Anything for Chief Newman? Chief Peterson?
I don't have anything either.
Anything, Chief Peterson? Hearing none. Dan?
Just a quick update on the airport user survey. We sent out a pretty extensive mailer to airport users in the area. We did see a pretty significant response back, so I got over 60 responses that came in from that mailer, and they're still trickling in. That countless from last week, so.
Wow.
The mailer was a success. They're happy with the numbers that we're seeing, and they, I talked to the engineer last week, and they said, the larger the numbers, you're going to get a better picture of what people actually are going to be using the airport for. So, they're extremely happy with the results so far of that. And then, this Wednesday, I'll be going down to the Men Car Expo, which is the Minnesota Commercial Real Estate Expo. I'll be sitting on the booth with Chris Eng from Washington County CDA, kind of talking about Washington County, myself specifically about developing in Forest Lake. So, hopefully, we make some connections during that expo on Wednesday.
Very good. Thanks, Dan. Sandy?
Nothing more to add.
Anything for Sandy? Karen?
No updates.
Patrick?
Just two items. We are taking our next step in our bonding process. We'll have our rating calls with Standard and Poor's tomorrow. We're prepared for that and ready to go, so that should be no issue. And I would just like to congratulate Abby, our council payable clerk, for the birth of her daughter on Saturday.
Oh, that's exciting. Very good. Bridgette?
Your update.
Ryan?
I'll just open up for questions.
Anything for Ryan? Dave?
Just one quick update. The water main repair on Forest Street Northwest is completed. They should have it reestablished and then hopefully paved on Friday. So, the rain kind of held them back, so they got to reestablish some of that gravel, and then should be back to blacktop by the weekend. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Jordan?
The planning commission meeting was canceled. However, the Forest Lake, Comfort Lake Watershed did meet. They gave a nice update on Shields Lake. Unfortunately, they were disappointed with the amount of carp that were pulled out. It was, they only pulled about 70 out. They were sadly disappointed in the results. As you saw in the consent agenda, they're going to get a new airator, which should help. They think they still have about 700 carp left out there.
Wow.
That's what I know.
That's a lot of carp.
That is a lot of carp. So, if you're a carp fisherman, knock yourself out.
Councilmember Munson?
No updates. None of my meetings have met. Just, you know, feedback from residents on the compost site and a couple more stragglers and garbage.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Beister?
Just one update. Attended the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission meeting. They approved the Parkland dedication for the Headwaters 12th Edition. They're changing the date for the tree lighting ceremony. It's now going to happen a little earlier, so stay tuned for the details around that, the specific date and time. They also approved the Arts in the Parks schedule for 2020, and they added a Tuesday right around the Fourth of July. The Fourth is historically fallen, or has fallen close anyway, to one of those Tuesdays, and it's been easier to just cancel that particular week, but it's on a Saturday this year, so they decided to add an extra session. And then, there was just some discussion around city school partnerships, some sponsorships, packages that they're developing for their events, a review of the maintenance needs list, and an update on the Belt Park master plan.
Very good. Councilmember Hosneck?
Thank you. I was privy to sit in on the, for the school, they're working on a new plan, and like we were doing, you know, for comprehensive, or not comprehensive plan, but anyways, they divided up into separate tables, and I also added a table that was communication and marketing. But really, what they, and the way they did it, is, you know, let's look at what we're proud of, look at possibilities, and then what are the absolute needs that we need? So, the must-haves. And it was a pretty good meeting for the first time around, and got a lot of input. And of course, same thing, where everything was up on the wall, and was discussed afterwards after the meeting. And so, I feel honored to be sitting on that committee and doing what we can here. Now, our next meeting is on November 4th, and of course, this is going to go on for a couple of months, so I'll keep you posted on what's happening there, so.
Great, very good. Just have a quick update. Ryan and I had an opportunity to attend the Forest Lake Area School District School Board meeting last Thursday, where we approached them for support on a portion of right-of-way that we need for the 97 and Goodview project. Happy to have their support, happy to have their partnership, and it was a good opportunity to just give them an update on that overall project. Also, a note that there is a link available. I believe it is on the city site, and if not, it will shortly be on the city site, where public comment for those state bond projects is available. Opportunity to view all state bond projects. Forest Lake has three items on that list, and there's an opportunity to provide public comment, and those comments will be reviewed by both the governor, as well as the financed committees that are working on those bonding requests. So, good opportunity to provide some public comment. Also, had a quick opportunity to attend, for a short period of time on Saturday evening, the Forest Lake Area Historical Society annual meeting. And just a quick reminder that tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM is the YMCA and Forest Lake Area Schools Inclusion Partnership Training, Class 1 of a three-class series. It should be a great event. Invite everyone to attend. That is the end of council updates, and we will move into closed session.
Madam Mayor, I move to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 subdivision 1B, labor negotiations with law enforcement labor services local 111 for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations, and Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05 subdivision 3 for the purpose of evaluating the performance of city administrator Patrick Casey.
the purpose of evaluating the performance of city administrator Patrick Casey. The closed meeting will be held in Forest Lake Room and will commence immediately. Once the closed meeting is completed, the city council will reconvene the open meeting portion of tonight's city council meeting in council chambers. There being no further items on the agenda, once back in open session, the council will simply adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to close, and there's a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
And we're closed.[1785.21]